Ladies and gentlemen, I'll call to order the March meeting of the Oxford Planning Commission. Commissioners, you have the agenda before you. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
This printed copy. We have the item number 20, which is case 3059. We actually moved that to the consent agenda.
Okay. Please note that the last item on the printed agenda has been moved to the consent agenda. Any questions from the commission on that? That's how it appears online as well.
Yeah.
All right, with that change noted, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Commissioners, any changes or additions to the minutes from the February meeting? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Ben, do we have a staff report today?
Staff report today.
Thank you, sir. That takes us to the consent agenda. We have four cases on the, five cases on the consent agenda, including case 3059. If there is no discussion on the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? All right. Our first case for public hearing will be case number 3050. Century Construction has filed a request for a variance from section 98-118 for property located at Brittany Road.
Good evening. The Brittany Arms Office Site Plan proposes an underground detention basin proposed to meet City of Oxford's stormwater management requirements. Due to the relatively small size of the project area, the predeveloped and post-development flow rates are very small. And because of this, the discharge rate for the two-year storm, an orifice smaller than three inches is required to meet the requirements for that specific recurrence. Our ordinance specifies a minimum orifice size of three inches simply for maintenance purposes. It's, you can imagine, most of these detention systems are not well-maintained anyway, much less one with an orifice size smaller than three inches. So they have requested a variance to not meet the two-year storm and still use the three-inch orifice. The excess discharge in the two-year storm is only .12 CFS, which is not noticeable. So engineering supports this variance request.
Thank you, sir. So just to summarize, in case any of our commissioners are not stormwater aficionados, the choice is between having, the minimum orifice size right now is three inches.
Three inches.
So the choice is either to give them a smaller orifice size that meets the flow requirements or to allow the smaller storms to pass.
Correct.
And since it's a small property, you're saying let's let the smaller...
Yeah, the excess discharge would not be noticeable.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Is there any questions from the commission? Anyone from the audience who should speak on this case? If not, is there a motion on the variance for the orifice size?
Most to grant the variance.
There's a motion to approve the variance. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? All right. Thank you, sir. See, the next case for public hearing will be case number 3043. Century Construction has filed a request for site plan amendment for Brittany Arms Office property located at Brittany Road.
Same here, property. So yes, it's a management office for Brittany Estates, north of Brittany Woods. Applicant is proposing to expand the management building to add additional amenities for the residence. The primary use is not changing, and the complex will remain as multifamily. The current management building will expand to include a community space, a kitchenette, a business center, and maintenance room. Because the primary use is not changing, and the drivers and parking associated with the management office are not increasing, additional parking is not required. And a landscaping plan has been provided that includes new parking lot trees and foundation planning so that meet the requirements of the LDC. And the building materials will be brick to match the existing structure. Engineering has provided comments related to access water and sewer, storm and stormwater management. And staff recommends approval of the site plan amendment with the five conditions stated.
Thank you, Robert. Any questions from the commission? Any questions or comments from the audience? Hearing none. Is there a motion on case number 3043?
Motion to approve the site plan amendment for Brittany Arms Office with the five conditions as noted.
We have a motion to approve subject to staff conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? All right. The amendment is approved. That brings us to, and we'll hear the next two cases together, case number 3052 and 3053. One is for a request for a special exception is provided in section 5542. Screening for magnolia collection property located at 1250 Tyler Avenue, and then that will be followed by the site plan review. Ben?
Thank you. So the magnolia collection is a...
We have someone online?
I think it might have been our microphone. That's better. The magnolia collection is a mixed-use development. It's located at the intersection of Tyler Avenue and South 14th Street. It's the property that's located right behind Nuke's. There's, I guess it's a, you know, parking lot. I think there's a couple vacant buildings there. It includes the warehouse and the Quonset hut of the hill on Tyler. So the applicant's proposing a mixed-use development there. It's kind of two buildings. They're really together, and they work together, but it's still, if you look at it, it's kind of two separate buildings. And the special exception request is for screening. We do have a requirement that when you have rooftop mechanical equipment such as a vena hood or a condensing unit, when they're on top of the roof, then you need to have a parapet wall that extends as tall as all of those elements on the rooftop. And that would be on all sides. Or there's an option to seek a special exception where you could put in a screen, which is what the applicant is proposing to use in this instance, which would be a screen. It would enclose all the way around all the condensing units on the building. And they're going to use a material that's very similar to what is being used on the actual building. So staff recommends approval of that requested special exception with three noted conditions. I will note that the property is in the Courthouse Square Preservation District. This design did go before that Courthouse Square Commission. And so they reviewed it, and they approved that COA request. They were fine with what was being proposed from a design standpoint. So as noted, and this is moving on to 3052, the site plan that's before you. The subject property, you know where it is. It's the same piece of property. It's about .89 acres. It's in the Historic Urban Center and the Courthouse Square Preservation District. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing structures on the site in order to construct, it's really two, three-story mixed-use buildings that are connected by a courtyard above the garage level that has entry from Tyler Avenue. Parking is accessed by an entrance that is located on South 14th Street. Building A, which would be closer to 14th Street and kind of at that intersection of Tyler. Building A is a three-story building. It contains approximately just about 5,400 square feet of commercial space right at that corner of that intersection. There's an east lobby that provides access to an elevator and staircase to the building along with mail and package, package area for that building. The second building and the third floors, the second and third floors of building A consist of eight residential units. Building B consists of a basement level with parking, a west lobby that provides access to the elevator and the stair along with the mail and the package area. And there's also a trash area down in the garage level. The floors above the garage each consist with eight residential units. The development contains a total of 40 residential units. As I mentioned, the property is located in the Courthouse Square Preservation District. The applicant presented the development to the Courthouse Square in a complimentary review, which is they come and they present the idea, and there's a bit more of a discussion. There's no formal action. That meeting took place in November of 2023, and the project received approval for a certificate of appropriateness at the December 4th, 2023 meeting. So the use and the parking requirements associated with it, it's a mixed-use development with commercial uses on the ground floor and the upper levels of residential, which is allowed in this district. Parking's not required for uses in the Historic Urban Center when on-street or nearby parking facilities are available. But in this instance, the development proposal includes 56 parking spaces being provided onsite in a garage, kind of podium parking. But public parking lot is also located across the street with two more very nearby. You're allowed to cover the entire site. This site is actually slightly less than that, at about 93% being proposed. Building height and the floor area ratio are compliant with their requirements. The architecture, as I mentioned before, was satisfied in the review from the Historic Preservation Commission. There is a sidewalk connectivity with a fire lane and pedestrian path along the western portion of the building, along Tyler. But then it comes into a sidewalk that wraps around the building in an arcade, arcade style. As mentioned, that's special exception. They are requesting the special exception for screening for the rooftop mechanical equipment, which we recommended approval. Engineering did provide comments related to water and sewer, access sidewalks, street typical section, construction staging plan, drainage, and the stormwater management plan that are all included in the staff report. Staff recommends approval with the noted eight conditions that are included in the report. We did receive a letter from Mr. Wilson, who's here and represented by Jeff Williams. I did also see the applicant and the applicant's engineer and their architect in the room, and I'm sure they'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ben.
You bet.
Commissioners, are there any questions before we hear from Mr. Wilson or his representative?
Do you want to hear from maybe the applicant? We're having a little bit of technical difficulties here with the audio, and the IT department's back there working on it.
Good evening. Joey Moore with Jay Engineering. Ben, that's pretty good spiel. I don't really have anything to add to that, but I'm here to answer any questions that you have. If you guys want to talk about that drainage issue that we saw the letter on, I'm here to do that as well.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. I think that'll be the main question to talk about. Mr. Wilson or Jeff, either one of you?
My name's Robert Wilson. I'm with Mercantile Properties and a lifelong resident of Oxford. I very much appreciate the opportunity to address this commission. We just need to make sure that developer understands that because of their project, at some point, the north end of our stormwater drainage system will have to be reworked so that it is limited solely to our stormwater. And that they agree that all their stormwater will then be properly directed into city system by the, by way of their property, including any amount that is currently going into our system. And in the meantime, that they install and monitor silt fencing to prevent a pipe full of mud underneath Nuke's restaurant. So I think maybe we're all in agreement about this, but I just wanted to, for it to be confirmed.
Yes, sir.
That's the drainage issue. Did you want to talk about the setback issue also now?
Yeah, you can go ahead and present both.
Okay. So this developer has chosen to propose terraced windowed living spaces on the back of their building very close to our common property line, knowing that it is very likely that a building of equal height will be proposed on our property in the foreseeable future. So it seems like that now is a short-lived opportunity to decide if such things as views from the terrace or views from the windows need additional distance between these two buildings. And if so, have it be required from this developer now or agree then not to unfairly require it solely from us in the future. I thought it might be helpful to visit this issue within the contents of this meeting for everyone's future benefit. But I want to make it clear that we're most certainly not expecting for some additional distance to be required of this developer. We're only asking that it not be solely and unfairly required from us in the future. And I would really appreciate y'all's consideration.
Thank you, sir. So just to make sure that I understood, so taking the second point on the view from the terraces, your main concern is that you own the property adjacent, by the code, you can build up to your property line. That would put whatever you built very close to those terraces, and you wouldn't want your right to build to be limited by concern for the sightlines or whatever from those terraces. Is that right?
That's correct. Because there's an opportunity to do something about that now if it's deemed necessary.
Yes, sir.
If it's not deemed necessary, then we don't want to be held to a different standard.
Understood.
Going forward.
Yes, sir. And then the drainage is a little more involved, but Mr. Wilson and I spoke with Ben earlier in the week about the details. The issue, just so it's on the record, is that right now we have what I would call a pretty neighborly situation, which is that there's a drain on the developer's property, and there's a pipe that goes under your property. And the drain is fed by both properties, but right now it's all draining under your property.
Yeah, it's a private drain. Our drain system's private. So we, for obvious reasons, we don't want their stormwater going under our building in that old system that's antiquated and, you know, who knows what. But I think I've spoken, Jeff Williams has spoken to their engineer, and I think there's a real simple solution to this. We just want to make sure that they understand that we will have to rework the north end of our drainage system.
Certainly.
They need to have all their stormwater going out of the city system on their property.
Certainly. And so, yeah, just so it's on the record, at any point, that pipe belongs to you. It could be cut off for whatever purposes, and they wouldn't have access to that as long as the developer is aware of that currently and plans accordingly.
That's correct.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions on this case?
I guess I would ask Joey, what is your plan?
For that down through there?
Yeah.
So I mean, here's the situation that we're in, is that, so the majority of that parking lot now and probably some of those buildings that are there now go to that drain. So I did a rough calculation on Friday. I don't have one of these numbers, but like .68 acres from our, just from our site kind of drains over in that area. And so when we build our building, you know, it takes up the majority of the site. It's all going to be in a roof system. That .68 goes down to 0.04 acres going into that drain. So the question is, is how do we figure that out? The fire department has requested us to be 10 foot off that property line for access. Any three-story building that they would require the same thing. So that 10 feet between the building and ours is difficult to figure out and how we're going to handle it. So the runoff number is ridiculous, and we're allowed to, as long as we're not discharging more water into the neighborhood, then that's acceptable by city code. So we're willing to work with them and figure out a solution to it. I would say that, to a degree, that it's got to be reasonable.
Do you have any idea what the runoff numbers are for that 1004?
The, keep me a few seconds. I don't. I don't. I know we've got... I don't. I think it's 24-inch, right? Maybe leaving the system so that would handle it. But it's all, you know, like I said, 90% of it is going into our system. Just that strip that the fire department requested from the building edge of the property line would be green space, and it's naturally going that way anyway right now.
Is there something you can tie into on Tyler or...
We've looked at that and run, and run stuff down that line. We'd be interested in working with them on a detailed plan on that because all their water's got to go somewhere too at the end of the day. And so maybe that pipe is jointly run, you know, down the property line or something like that to make that work. But it's, you know. Yeah.
Appreciate it. Other questions? Yes, please. If you would, just come forward.
We just don't want any of that water going into that pipe for obvious reasons because I think their stormwater needs to 100% be put in the city system where it belongs from their property, and ours needs to all be put in the city system from our property. We don't know what's going to happen there in the future, so we're trying to avoid a conflict down the road. When something gets proposed on our property and that gets cut off, where's that little bit of water that he's talking about going to go?
Yes, sir.
You know, that's the issue, I think, that we're talking about here as far as I can tell. So that's kind of where we are with it.
Thank you, sir.
Rob, didn't you mention that Jeff had mentioned an easy solution?
Yeah, Jeff might want to speak about that. I think he could probably tell you about it better than me.
I don't know how easy a solution it is. When I was brought into this, my concern was doing something, trapping Joey and him, having, counting on them using that structure and having water trapped there should Mr. Wilson do something in the future. So I suggested one alternative be to make it clean. If they could handle getting their water out from behind the building that they're proposing, then Mr. Wilson could come on his property, cut the pipe off, put an inlet, head a curb it off, catch his water. They wouldn't be receiving any water off of his parking lot. It would go into his system and go out. And that's what Joe and I were talking about, if there was another solution for them to get the water out from behind their building without going through there.
Is there any potential for not meeting code one way or the other on this? I mean, is this something that we need to adjudicate here, or is this something that they can work out?
I think it's something that can work out between them and still meet our stormwater.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Joe, you have one more question. You said the fire department required 10 feet for a three-story building.
That's correct.
So if Mr. Wilson or anybody that he sells his to, they can build a three-story building. You're going to have, you know, people that are 20 feet apart.
I will say, yes, yes. And I will say the fire department rule has changed recently, and every site is looked at individually. But that was the requirement that he put on us, and we've looked at other with him since the change. And I've had some other three-story projects, and he's, we need 10 feet around. And I said, well, can we use the neighbor's property, my 10 feet for, you know? No, because if you guys put up a fence or something, then we can't get from y'all. So my understanding is that a three-story building would require 10 feet. But I do know that they look at each project individually, trying to make those rules work, especially downtown.
Thank you, Joe.
I know in the separate recommendations, y'all would have to submit a construction plan. The demolition of those two, I guess warehouses that you would call them.
Sure.
I guess my concern would be, and I know it would have to go before the mayor and board of aldermen if you were to have to shut down that road, but is there a phase to how, I mean, I'm assuming you would...
Yes, yes. And we're working through the phasing plan now. We understand that'll be a condition of construction permits and all that stuff. It's obviously we're using the whole site. We've got to figure out some stations and stuff like that, and we'll work through all that as far as any kind of road closures. I don't know the details of it now, so I hate to say, no, we're not going to close that road, and we have to close it down for, you know, a day or two. Like, I think they closed it down last week to do some borings out there around the building or something like that. So I'm not saying that wouldn't happen, but I don't know all the ins and outs of that at this point.
Any further questions?
Robert, are you comfortable with all that?
Well, I don't know if, it sounds like, seeing you here, you said that there is a feasible way for that small trickle of water to get to city streets other than across our property.
I think, I think we can get a swell over there and get it over there. We just, I think our concern was doing work on Nuke's property.
Yeah, I just, I think that's, the only question I have is, is that a fact or not? Whether we can get that, and that's really y'all's problem. I just want...
That's correct.
To understand.
That's correct.
That's whole drainage going to disappear at some point along.
Right, right.
That's what I want to get across.
Okay.
All right. Any further comment from the audience? All right, we have two cases to vote on here, so we'll do the special exception for the screening first, case number 3052. Is there a motion on the special exception?
I'll move to approve subject to the three special conditions.
Staff condition.
Staff condition.
Staff conditions.
Yeah. Motion to approve subject to staff conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And case number 3053, which is the site plan for the Magnolia Collection, is there a motion on the site plan?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Eight staff conditions.
Subject to the staff conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. They are approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to case number 3054. Chickasaw Holdings has filed a request for a plat amendment for property located at 1309 North Lamar Boulevard. Ben?
The next two cases are also related as well, but y'all may remember from back in December, this, this property. So the properties, the subject property is on North Lamar. It's the old Lamar Lounge Building. And what has happened is that was a two-lot subdivision, and this is a request to amend that to remove Lot 2 of that subdivision from the entire subdivision. So, that will just be 1309 North Lamar will be a one-lot subdivision. That property's been acquired, and it's related to the next case, which would be incorporated into the Lamar Development subdivision. So, so all that you have remaining is, it's a one-lot subdivision, and it measures about .71 acres. And the applicant did provide us with letters regarding adversely affected and directly interested parties and signatures of approval for their, for that. And engineering did provide a couple of comments. Staff recommends approval of this amendment with the one condition noted in the staff report.
And Ben, is there anything you want to add just for case 3055, since they're connected?
Sure. Thank you. So, the .41 acres that was formerly a part of 1309 North Lamar is being incorporated into the Lamar Phase 4, and that property has been rezoned to the TND, the Lamar TND. The applicant did provide, again, signatures of approval of those directly interested and adversely affected parties. Engineering did provide comments related to access and easements, water and sewer, stormwater management. Staff recommends approval with the three noted conditions in the report.
So effectively, this is what it looks like to move a lot from one subdivision to another.
Take it out of one subdivision and put it into another one, yes.
Any questions for Ben? Any questions or comments from the audience? If not, is there a motion on case number 3054 for the plat amendment at 1309 North Lamar Boulevard?
I'll make a motion to approve with the one staff condition.
Motion to approve with the staff condition. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? All right. And then case number 3055 for the complimentary plat amendment for the Lamar Phase 4A. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, three staff conditions.
Motion to approve with the staff conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? All right. It's granted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Our next case is case number 3056. Brad Walsh has filed a request for a preliminary and final plat for property located at 911 Lincoln Avenue. Okay?
Okay. So, the applicant seeks to subdivide the existing around 2.6 acre lot. The underlying zoning is traditional suburban residential, and the site is located in the Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District. The property features frontage on both Buchanan and Lincoln Avenues. There's one existing home on the lot that fronts Buchanan, which is the family home of the applicants, the Garry's, and is a contributing structure in the South Lamar Historic District. The applicant seeks to create four lots at the rear of the property, all of which would front Lincoln Avenue. The proposed area to be subdivided into the four lots measures about .71 acres. A similar proposal was presented to the planning commission at the November 22, 2022 meeting, and was tabled. At that time, the request was tabled to allow the applicant to gather and provide more information on the tree mitigation and impact, as well as a stormwater plan for this development. As over a year passed after that action, a new proposal was required and case number assigned, which is the case before you tonight. The project was heard by the tree board at the April 2023 meeting. There is a historic tree on the neighboring lot at 904 South 11th Street, and the board discussed potential paving within the drip line with permeable pavers, as well as possible protection measures for construction for the tree. The tree board did vote at that meeting to allow for the applicant to work within the drip line of the tree. The proposed lots vary in size slightly from around .17 to .18 acres. Lot Zone Traditional Suburban Residential are required to measure at least 7,500 square feet, and that requirement is met exactly by this subdivision, and so they exactly meet that requirement. Each lot features approximately 71.5 feet-ish of street frontage, while rear lot lines range from 68.48 to 72.27 feet. The applicant notes that stormwater will be addressed at each site individually as the buildings are proposed and built. Major subdivisions of property are rare in Oxford's historic districts, as most of the historic core is built out and has been for some time. Subdivision should be considered carefully to ensure that the necessary growth and development of the city is careful, and that the historic downtown core of Oxford can handle approved infill projects. The Conservation Overlay District, which this property is in, encompasses Oxford's distinctive older neighborhoods and commercial areas, which contribute significantly to the overall character and identity of the community, and features several goals meant to address the physical characteristics, livability, and compatible development and design in Oxford's older neighborhoods. Additionally, one of the factors of site plan review, as laid out in the Land Development Code, states that general site arrangement, amenities, and convenience, with particular reference to ensuring that appearance and general layout of the proposed development will be compatible and harmonious with properties in the general area, and will not be so at variance with the other development in the area as to cause a substantial negative impact on such property values. While the proposed subdivision meets the minimum traditional suburban residential zoning requirements for lot size, the proposed lots are not of typical size or street frontage for Lincoln Avenue. The Neighborhood Conservation Overlay is in place to ensure that new development is compatible with the existing neighborhood. With a couple of exceptions, most neighboring lots on Lincoln Avenue have at least 100 feet of street frontage, with some even up to 160 feet. The commission shall consider if the proposed smaller lots are appropriate in this context, and if the proposed subdivision is in keeping with the character and rhythm of the existing lots on the street. Staff believes that the proposal should be limited to three lots on Lincoln, and that the remainder of the property should be included as a lot, thus creating a four-lot subdivision. So that would be one, one lot with the house fronting Buchanan and the associated land that fronts Buchanan, and three lots in the proposed four-lot area. Three lots featuring around 95 feet of street frontage would be more in keeping with the size of the existing lots on Lincoln. Engineering staff provided comment on access, sidewalks, grading, water and sewer, and stormwater management. Staff is recommending denial of the requested preliminary and final subdivision plat for the Gary subdivision as proposed, and instead recommends that the applicant create a four-lot subdivision, as we just mentioned, one lot with the house on Buchanan and three lots fronting Lincoln. Should the commission wish to approve the requested plat, staff has recommended six conditions, a couple of planning and a few from engineering, that we would like to be included. So I know the applicants are here. I'm happy to answer any questions about the staff report. You have them. We did receive a lot of comment from the neighborhood, email form, mostly from email and letter format, which was all provided to you guys and put on the city website.
Mr. Williams?
Jeff Williams with Williams Engineering Consultants, representing the Gary family. I think she laid it out pretty well. It has been a long, arduous time trying to figure out how to best develop this site. A couple of items I do want to interject as far as some of the comments on the report. Some of the lots that is referred to as larger lots, I know at least one of those are combined two lots. There may be more that are combined. At some point in time, this entire Gary property, the property that fronts Lincoln, was separated into individual lots. So, but now it's owned by one, one entity, if you will, when you search the descriptions. As to the, the, the comments about the grading, there was a comment about not having open ditches. Well, it's currently an open ditch there now. It's much lower than, than the curb that's there now. So, what we've tried to do is, is do as little to, to the property as possible. Talk the applicants into making sure that their houses were built up on blocks, so we wouldn't trap the water, which is a big concern. I think that the, the last set of construction plans, even the first set, had a, a plan on it that would ensure that the property to the east would, would not be blocked. If you go there during the rain now, there's water standing around that big tree, which has nothing to do with anything that's been done on this site. So I think we've got that taken care of. As far as the stormwater for each individual lot, it's, it's amazing what the stormwater requirements are for a small lot. So, we've, we've, I've worked with Steve on several occasions, more than three different tries at trying to satisfy that. I, I'm not speaking for Steve for this last submitted, but I think there is a way to do it. Obviously, it, it can be done. It's just a matter of money and, and area. As far as what, what was submitted on the last plans, the majority of the, the comments that were made were not technical. They were notes solidifying some questions that they had about water and sewer. So we feel like we've satisfied all the requirements that the, the regulations call for.
Thank you, sir. As I recall, the, the first hearing on this case, the main issues that resulted in tabling the case were the situation with the tree, part of which the, the drip line is on the easternmost, what, easternmost lot.
That's right.
And then, so the tree board has, has made their determination on that. And the other was the stormwater. And my recollection of that discussion was that the main issue was that even though there are going to be four lots, it increases the impervious surface on that area significantly. And as you mentioned, the requirements are such that it's a lot for any small area to try to deal with on their own. So I think part of the discussion was whether fewer lots with some regional detention might be easier to accomplish that, or, to put another way, lower risk for the surrounding neighborhood. Can you respond to that, please?
Based on what calculations I've run, it's, it's going to be virtually impossible without clear cutting the lot and filling it up, because the first run we had at it was two runs of 48-inch pipe, where you can't get fill over it to get up to it without building the lot well above. So that was a no-go. And I think Steve was the one that recommended, let's look at doing an individual system for each lot, because I have to allow the water that's coming from the north to pass through. So I've, I've got that on the grading plan, as well as the property to the east, all going into the same covert that it's going in now. And with the individual sites having their own detention, it shouldn't increase.
Other questions?
Clarify that for me a little bit, Jeff. You're saying for, to do the whole four lots with one detention to collect all that water, you have to have a 48-inch pipe underground system. But for one lot, you use a smaller pipe?
So, so let me, let me clarify that. It's, it's two lengths of 48, about 200, 200 feet long versus a series of chambers of 12-inch pipes to, to avoid having a cover issue. That's, the, the bed itself is 100 feet by 70 feet wide with about 50 chambers, the seven-foot by 12-inch chambers, to, to even come close to catching it. So, it's, it's, I'm not saying one is above the other, but if you put a, a regional detention in there, you're going to have much bigger pipes, because you're not going to have enough room to put smaller pipes and, and avoid whether it's three or four lots.
If, if, when I drove over there to take a look at it, where that tree is substantially lower than what it is on Buchanan?
Yes.
Any thought to facing the houses to Buchanan, so the water, so that topography does not change as much right there? If you're talking about building houses up on blocks on Lincoln, you're going to, it seems like to me you're going to push the water back on to, for instance, Mr. Dr. Die's house?
No. We've, I've got a ditch in front of it, just like it is now. Where Dr. Die's water's going, that's where it will go after construction.
Okay. So, if that's the case, was there any thought to maybe facing the houses to Buchanan, so there is easier runoff there?
That's something that owners would have to answer.
Brad?
Thank you, sir. Probably nobody in here.
Could you come forward, please, and state your name for the record?
Harry, I, I, I appreciate it. I, you know, that's thinking outside the box, and that one day maybe you could get something like, I think Stefano Capomazza had developed at one point where you had more of a, maybe Louisiana, where they faced each other and had some sort of causeway. But we really don't want to develop Buchanan. At, at this juncture at least, we really are trying to, trying to keep that the same. You know, Ford Die's lot experiences problems. Ford Die's lot experiences a problem, because it's, like you said, below the grade already. It's, and that's not something we did to him. That's something that, that whoever built that house did. So we're doing our level best to make sure that his project, or that, that his house doesn't suffer any longer. And that's, that I think's all we can do and get, and get the four lots, where we're not going ahead and developing Buchanan. I, I think that's kind of all we can do.
So is the flag that I'm seeing on the, on the, if I'm standing on Lincoln, and I see the flags back in the trees that are there, that's the back of that lot?
I'm not sure.
There's a fence up there. I don't know. We've, we've been out there so many times. There, there's some control points out there, but that's likely what it is. There, if you come from the back of the, the home that fronts Buchanan, and come to the very back of, there's a fence behind there where their yard stops, the back line of this property, which was an original boundary line at some point.
So, so if, if I'm thinking correctly, that line, if in the future you wanted to build other houses on Buchanan, you could, that would be similar backing up to those on Lincoln?
Correct, correct. And, and, and also, you got to remember that, that Ford's garage area, it's, it's pretty big. You know, he, he talked about being worried about the tree. I don't think he was so worried about the tree when he was building his own addition on there, that, that decreased the, you know, that, that provided for water on his property. I don't remember his, I don't remember his property having that kind of water issue before that was built, but I honestly wasn't looking for it. But that is a relatively new addition, and, you know, that's, he's got the problem now. We're trying, we're trying to fix his problem and not exacerbate it, certainly.
So could I, could I go back to something you said, Jeff, for just a second? Did I understand you right in response to Commissioner Milam, you said that it would be either two 48-inch pipes to collect, or a bed of 12-inch pipes with roughly dimensions of 70 feet by 100 feet?
Yeah, that was the last thing that was submitted.
I mean, maybe it's coincidence, but that's almost exactly the footprint of one of these lots, 70 by 100. And so I guess that's my point. Would it be better-
Maybe I got it wrong. It's 109 by, I'm sorry, 70 is not correct.
Okay.
It's 100 feet north and south, and it was 32 feet, I think, east and west. So, I don't know if they've got the latest one in here. I could show you on one of these lots where I had, I was working with Lot 4, because that's the first one that they want to do.
Yeah.
So, the east half of Lot 4, there, there would be a driveway that would be coming in on the east side of that lot. And from the house over to within eight feet of the property line is where I had my drainage bed.
Gotcha. Thank you, sir.
Sorry, that was confusing. I-
It looks the orange lines. They're just looking, I'm looking at that Lot 4. Looks like there's some orange lines going, running north and south. It looks like some run east and west. It says drainage- and west. It says drainage area.
It's from sheet DA 2.
Yes. Those are 12-inch underground detention cells called chambers.
Additional questions for the owner or the engineer before I open it up to the audience?
Again, I've got a comment about the truly past here on this side of Lincoln. There are only 10 homes that front Lincoln. The 160-foot lot, I think, fronts South Lamar. It doesn't front Lincoln. Neither does Ford Dye's house. Of those 10, you've got one that's 85 feet and one that's 58 feet frontage-wise. It's not like these are an aberration out of hundreds of lots. There's 10. And you're talking about it probably being 14 feet off the average. To address some of, well, the other, the other thing that I thought was a little overblown was the number of comments. As of this afternoon, I counted maybe five comments from four different people. Mr. Dye had done it twice. So, and when Jeff talked about the one house that's two lots, that one's total frontage is 125 feet. So if it had never been allowed to be combined, we'd be talking about a couple of 60, 65-feet lots.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone from the audience that'd like to speak on this case? Yes, sir. Please come forward and state your name.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. My name is Duke Gosin. I live on the corner of Lincoln and South 11th. And I feel like that my lot will be heavily impacted by adding four more lots on Lincoln. There are, I counted, it's been two days or three days since I did this, but I think there are 24 curb cuts from South 11th Street to the end of Lincoln. Now, there may not be that many houses there, but every one of those curb cuts represent an access point for an automobile. And there are plenty of automobiles down there. If you're driving down the street, you know, if, if those four lots are put there, we're going to add considerable traffic in and out. There's no way to get out of that area except by coming east on Lincoln. And so everybody that goes in is going to have to come out that way. And during the time of day when there are lots of cars on the street, eight, 12, five, whatever, those are times when, that's going, there's some difficulty associated with all that. I mean, you all understand the traffic better than I do, but that's a part of this that's a problem. Now, I know that counsel was nice enough to talk for Dr. Dye about his lot and represent for Dr. Dye's benefit for what was being said, but Dr. Dye asked me to say that he is adamantly opposed to this. He feels like it's going to put water on him that he cannot get rid of and would simply be an additional burden to his lot. I don't know what they're talking about with culverts or tiles that are perforated and they're under a house or something like that to get that water off. But if that water gets in the street, if you drive down the street, that street makes a little hump. And either the water's going to come east down that street and be into Ford's driveway, won't come into my driveway because my driveway comes up, but it'll come into Ford's driveway and into his carport that comes down the street like that. But basically, you know, the ordinance says that anytime you do something like this, you have to do it in such a way so as the additions or whatever are going to fit into the neighborhood and you're going to have essentially four straight up and down houses, one, two, three, four on those lots. The lots, as was said, are about 100 or so feet wide. You add a driveway, because I think the city requires you to do that, to have a place to put your car. Obviously, everybody doesn't believe that because if you drive down that street, or my street, somebody's always parking on the street. But notwithstanding that, they still have to have a place to park the cars. And that requires a driveway. Well, I don't know what a driveway width is, 25 feet maybe, something like that. But you take all that out and you've got considerably less than 100 feet of actual front footage for your lot. And that front footage for your lot is going to have a lot to do with how the setbacks are determined on the pieces of property that are there. There was a good, not a lot. Some things were said about, well, these houses will conform to the neighborhood. We're not up here about conforming houses to the neighborhood. We're up here tonight about changing these lots from what they are to lots that can be used to build narrow, tall houses. And that is absolutely contrary to what the houses in that neighborhood are like. They're just, that's not the house that's in that neighborhood. There are virtually no new houses in that neighborhood if you go look. But even if they were made to look old, you've still got four lots. And I agree, they're wide enough, 100 feet, not counting the driveway, but you're still going to have houses that are straight up. You're going to have houses that are two rooms wide. They go back, and they got plenty of room to go back. But they're going to go back and they're going to go up. And certainly, if you drive down that street, you can tell that those types of constructions don't conform to what's already there. I mean, you know, right across the street is that, is the house that Beckett used to live in. I can't remember now. I'm sorry. I'm seeing now, but that's just the way it is. Who lives over that house, Kirk?
Talking about the Creekenworth house? The Creekenworth?
Yeah. You know, that house is probably the newest-looking one in the neighborhood. And then you go on down the street and, and you know, there's a nice white house, brick, and most of the houses are, you know, they're just typical Oxford houses. But they are not the houses that are brand-new, crackerbox, crackerbox, crackerbox in a lot that is on a one-way, narrow street. And the street is narrow. If you drive down the street, the car's parked on the side, you've got a way of in and out to get past all that. And the, you know, the last thing I want to say is, one of the criteria, or a special exception, or whatever we're talking about here, is an improvement to the city. And everybody can say, well, the city's going to get more tax money. Oh, that's true. Every chance you change, the city has more tax money. But what we're doing is, or what is going to be done, if that is allowed, is there'll be four houses built there. There'll be, that, any way you look at it, that's going to add up to eight cars. It's going to increase the pressure on the street. It's going to increase the pressure in the neighborhood. It will simply make the situation that's already there, which is not good, make it worse. And so for those reasons, I would respectfully ask that the request to do, make this change to that piece of property not be allowed. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Jeff, I think I cut off your line of questioning a little too soon. I think we have one more question for you if you can forward.
Just for the record, I want to make sure that we're not confused. We're not asking for a variance or a special exception.
Yes, sir. This is for the plat. I understand. Yeah.
I would assume that if you reduce the number of houses, that it would eliminate the stormwater drainage concerns. But that's why I'm asking you because you're the professional in regard to that.
So it would reduce the amount overall because you've got less hardscape?
Sure.
Unless I'm told to do different, it wouldn't change the way I have it graded to where the water will run. Yeah, I think that that's a fair assessment.
Let me, you two keep me honest because we have opposing views. But my understanding, the code makes you mitigate for the development. In this case, we're starting with tree-covered ground. So it's basically quote-unquote pristine. I mean, it's not pristine in the sense that it doesn't flood, but it's pristine in the sense of what the land cover is. Any changes to that to increase the impervious surface, you have to mitigate through the stormwater. But you're not held, as the developer, the developer's not held to mitigate any of the current flooding that's going on, right?
That's correct. But we do have to allow it to pass for, in some form or fashion.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
And this probably is a question for Brad instead, but is that something that y'all are willing to consider in reducing the number of homes? I know that that partly has been some of the recommendation from the staff.
Part of my overall frustration is, I see it as, partly as, it's not just that they wanted three houses, it's that they didn't want to let us phase the Buchanan property. Another part of the frustration is, especially when I read the comments, and as I said, there were only four people, and they throw out there my sister-in-law's letter. Not one of those people called me. I picked up the phone, called my sister-in-law and said, what are your plans? That'd been, you know, that'd been something that you would have thought that neighbors would do. I get that they've had, basically, their own, a park that they've been able to do things on for years and years, and that's just not realistic. We're going to try to do everything we can to mitigate any water problem. But the water problem right now exists. It's already there. And I don't know that that's something that we can fix. If he has, if Dr. Ford Dye has a solution to fix his existing problem by what we're doing, we're open to hearing. But we are not going to put one more drop of water on his property that's already there. And I just, it's, there's an awful lot of reasons, familial reasons, why we want the four lots. There's ways we could get the four lots without realistically even coming for a subdivision. You know, we could do those things. But we wanted it to be a good project. We wanted to have the benefit of your professional staff, as long as they're dealing with me honestly and openly, about what it is that's driving a lot of this. I feel like we were almost, it was almost tried to be a trick to us to not allow a phased development. And so I've been adamant on that. I don't think you were on the, on the board at the time, but it had to send a letter saying, just so we're clear, you know, we don't want to do anything to Buchanan right now. We might not do anything to Buchanan in 60 years, but it backs up to the university and we don't want to, kind of like Mr. Wilson today, I don't want anybody messing up whatever future, you know, my family or our family might have with respect to the Buchanan property. As Harry said, I mean, we could develop Buchanan, and you know what goes away? The issue with respect to lot size. Because there are smaller lots over on Buchanan. There's an 85-foot lot, the Creekenworth lot, it's 85 feet. There's another one that's 58 feet. Lindy, my sister-in-law's house, is going to be 37 feet wide. This isn't going to be, it's not going to be tall and skinny Nashville. Trust me, I was up there two weeks ago. It's not going to be like that. We are legitimately trying to make this a good project without being dictated to by some folks that frankly, I get their concerns, but at their core, their concern seems to be that they're going to now have four lots in front of them instead of three.
With all due respect to what's being said, we're here to decide whether or not these lots can be converted into lots that you can build a house on, give them a 100-foot by lot. There's nothing in any of these submissions that say what kind of subdivision is going to be built here, or how nice it's going to look, or how it's going to improve anything. These are simply lots that are being re-zoned so that a house can be built. And to split it over into then a nice subdivision exceeds what the potential to change these lots to have, what to do.
Yes, sir. You're correct. That's a good limitation on what we're voting on. We're only voting on subdividing the piece of property on Lincoln into four lots. We're not approving or not approving the plat. And while we're clarifying things, this is a recommendation to the Board of Aldermen. This is not the final say on the plats.
I guess I got a question to ask Jeff. I mean, my recollection, it's kind of like with JR, is we first brought this up, is how are we going to deal with this stormwater as a whole? And then what Brad just said is, well, you know, if you want to phase this, but, you know, on my street, when they develop three lots, they have to do all the stormwater and all the work before for those three lots. How is this different than, you know, what Jay did down my street?
You've got less than an acre that is draining on a structure that's on the property. I think, don't get confused with the phasing part that they're talking about. There had been some discussion about developing the entire piece, cutting the house out, fronting Buchanan, fronting here. That was the phasing that was discussed. It has been my experience for some developments like this where there was not a plan for each construction, each house to be built to allow each unit to have its own individual Since this is a subdivision, and I think the property you may be talking about, I guess it was a subdivision. I'm thinking about another property.
Yeah, it was full name.
We could have done the same thing. However, that was a development that was going to fill in. It was going to be a nice, clear path. We've got water coming from the east onto us. We've got to address, if you pile a lot of dirt in there, you have a bunch of piping networks to let that water pass. water pass through.
What about any concerns of the existing stormwater structure that's, it's through?
According to the hydraulics, the square foot opening will suffice what's going through it. So, we'll be not reducing it, but we will be not, excuse me, we will not be letting out more than's going through there now.
All right.
Hey, Brad, I don't know if you ever answered Aaron's question, would you be open to doing fewer?
No, we wouldn't be open to doing fewer in this court. I think my sister-in-law would like to speak.
Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
I'm Lindy Gary Graham, the middle daughter of three. I'm the one that's wanting to build now right behind Ford Di, who told me in November last year that he would love to have me as a neighbor, and we've tried to work everything we can out with the planning people, our engineer, our lawyer. We're willing to do whatever we need to do. We're not doing cookie cutter four houses. I would be right behind Ford's house, that's the one y'all keep talking about. It's not a high-rise, it's a two-story cottage-type house, fits with the neighborhood, harmonious. I have three children who possibly wouldn't wanna build next to me. This is my retirement home, I'm a retired teacher widow, and I'd like to live on my mother's land that she's been owning for 50 years. My other sister would like the two other lots to build on. She has two children in the future that would like to build on family land, so that's where we're coming from. It's just, it's family land, we've grown up in Oxford, and we'd like to build there, and whatever these gentlemen have told you about, you know, water, or the house, or the lot, you know, I think we've been trying to satisfy everything. Does anybody have questions for me?
Any questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this case? Yes, sir, please come forward.
Hi there, my name is Charles Owens, and I was raised at 906 Lincoln Avenue. Last year, we got a letter stating that these ladies wanted to build on this, on this land. It was sent to many people, you know, on the streets surrounding. So, I replied to their email stating that, you know, we were raised there and played there as children, and all these things, and that one day, I knew that this would, this would happen eventually. And one of my questions was, do you plan to just build on Lincoln? And will those homes extend into the big front yard of their mom's house over there? Miss Annie's Yard was what it was called, where children have played for years and years and years. None of that matters, you know, I know, but they did respond to me stating that they only planned to build two homes, and that they certainly would not extend into the big front yard, and that they wanted to build these homes for them and their family. And I said, I think that's wonderful, and I think that's, that's great, and that's nice. And then, suddenly, somewhere in there, it all changed to four homes. And I don't know if you all actually know this street, Lincoln Avenue. Buchanan is the same, very small, dead end, no place to go. When there was a new home built on Lincoln last year, right across the street from my mom's, it was built for six or eight months. It was, it was a long time, it was a small street. There were work trucks on that street for months and months and months. I had piles of leaves in my mother's front yard that literally were there for months, because the city couldn't get down there. They'd just look and see all the trucks, and... Anyway, I think that clearly, water runoff and all that is a, is a huge factor, but way more than that is, even though the law might say you can build four homes there, it doesn't mean that you should. It is a small space in old homes, and to, to build four homes there is too much. Also, you know, there's more than just four folks that care about what's going on there. And I don't know if you all have read the letters that were sent to you, some of them were very well-written, I thought, and I think it's way more about preserving our town. I mean, growth is, is, is one thing, and growth is not bad, but to come in on such a small, old street in jammed four houses in a tiny spot does not make sense. And then, you know, years from now, or months from now, or whatever, they're gonna wanna build eight homes over in that big front yard, right? Which is their right, it's their land, and the law says they can, but it doesn't mean that they should, or they... Four, four homes in that area is too much. You can't park, you can't drive, you can't get in, you can't get out, work trucks in and out, mail, trash, et cetera. That's what I think.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Can I, Mr. Owen? Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
When I was up there, I noticed that house that was built. Would you say that that house bettered the neighborhood?
Well, I will say.
I realize, I realize that eight months was a hassle, believe me, I understand that.
That's a speculative thing. It, where, so that lot was vacant, right? And the home that they built, roughly the same size and shape as the home that was there, so, in fact, when that lot was first cleared, I think that the person that bought it had plans to build some giant home, and he didn't realize that the zoning was such, or that he couldn't build a giant home, because it wouldn't blend in with the rest of the homes. I think that the home that they built is, is, is nice, and I think it fits the lot, similarly to the home that was there, you know, originally. I just think it's important for, you know, us to really think about what it means to preserve these old streets, the last vestige of this small town that isn't small anymore.
Thank you, sir. Sure. I do wanna respond to one point, just since we're on the record here, which you said, you know, it's legal, they can do it, and so they should. It wouldn't really be a question before us if it was all allowed by law. The reason we're discussing this is because, especially within the historic district, there's a question about whether this fits the neighborhood. The historic district provides judgment by the city in whether things fit the district. It doesn't strictly come down to a numbers game, although the numbers do play into it, and we've had some discussion about the size of the lot and the frontage, okay? So, it's not a done deal legally, that's what we're here to make a part of a determination on, to recommend to the Board of Aldermen. Did you have something?
Just, somebody mentioned rezoning in a comment a while ago, and we're certainly not asking for rezoning.
Okay. Yeah, so, I understand the concerns about the construction process, nobody anywhere in the city enjoys that. The smaller your street, the worse it is, I understand. I would say that we can't help relations between neighbors, it seems to be part of the issue here, but to be honest, that's why we have a code, so that we can adjudicate things evenly between neighbors. In this case, just to remind everybody, the question is not how many houses, or what kind of houses were, the question before the commission is whether we would recommend the plat with four lots as presented to us. Any questions or comments before I ask for a motion? All right. Yes, ma'am, please come forward. Please state your name for the record.
I'm Carolyn Simmons, and we live at 907 Lincoln. We're the new house that was built. And my husband and I moved from Nashville, and we wanted to live specifically in a historical neighborhood, and be among the townspeople that built the city of Oxford. There's so many places that we could've gone, new builds, all around Oxford, but we chose to live, or try to be able to live, in a small community, in a historical area. And luckily, we were able to buy the lot that we bought that was already cleared, so we didn't have the trouble with the trees and demolishing the home that was there. So, we were thankful for that, and I know that probably was a big deal when it happened, but we hope we built a house that was conducive to the neighborhood, that felt comfortable in the neighborhood. We wanted it to be smaller, of course, it got bigger, but we do feel like it lives in the neighborhood. And I also can understand Mrs. Gary's families want to have the same thing, that's where their family lived, but I do think that four houses is too many. And basically, that's what I have to say, I worry about the water. I know Ford Di has trouble with water. If we add more houses, I think it's gonna make that trouble with that water worse. There is a culvert there, it's about the size of this podium, and it's full a lot when it rains, with all the leaves and everything else that comes from the neighborhood, because there are a lot of trees there, it's a beautiful street. So, there is a lot of trees and debris that goes in that ravine. And I do think that we, it's a concern for the neighborhood, as well as Ford Di, as it should be for the Garrys, and whoever's gonna build there. I think four's too many.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, is there a motion on case number 3056 for preliminary and final plat? Can we just finish this process first, please? Is there a motion?
You know, I'm a realtor, and I really believe that you ought to be able to do with your, what you wanna do with your property within the confines of being able to do that. I think there are just so many questions here on this, on this particular property, in this particular section of town, that it really makes it difficult, from our standpoint, and I know from yours too. That being said, I would move that we deny the preliminary and final plat approval.
I have a motion to deny, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All in favor of denial? Any opposed? All right. The recommendation to the Board of Aldermen is for denial.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, that brings us to case number 3057. Andy Calacut has filed a request for a special exception as provided in section 2.6.7, ground floor residential, in a T and B district for property located 1105. Ladies and gentlemen, can we please either clear the courtroom or participate in this case? All right, Robert, we'll try one more time. Our next case is case number 3057. Andy Calacut has filed for a request for a special exception as provided in section 2.6.7, ground floor residential in a T and B district for property located 1105 North Amar.
All right, subject property is located on North Amar, just south of the Dollar General. The property's owned a traditional neighborhood business, and measures approximately 1.14 acres. It had a detached residence, but that's been bulldozed, and there's been a lot of groundwork done in the meantime. The site has a very steep drop in elevation from east to west, and the applicant was previously approved for a four-story storage facility with office space and a basement. The applicant has returned with a request for a special exception for ground floor residential to facilitate a three-story multifamily building, and we have yet to receive that site plan. The applicant states that there's a necessity for more residential units in Oxford due to the increasing enrollment at the university. Additionally, they contend that because the site shares access with the property to the south via Jimmy Mark Gas Station, and that that property is owned by the same owner, the two parcels should be considered as one site, and the gas station should suffice for the commercial elements of this site. The applicant references Savannah Square and the Morgan Building as mixed-use developments in the vicinity that have been successful. While the need for additional housing in Oxford is not in dispute, staff is reluctant to recommend relinquishing a commercial presence on a rapidly redeveloping commercial quarter. Staff has not necessarily gets the idea of some ground floor residential, as the above referenced, Savannah Square was just approved to incorporate some residential units on the ground floor, but they did retain half of that ground floor space as commercial. Additionally, staff has some concerns about the commercial element being located on a separate property under the name of their separate LLC. Despite the fact that the applicant is part of both of those LLCs, there's not a whole lot that ties these two lots together outside of a proposed shared access drive, and as such, staff doesn't believe that it's, at its current formulation, that this should be considered as one site. These concerns can be overcome with relatively minor changes to the plans. Addition of commercial space on the ground floor at one of the two prominent corners of this building would be ideal. Changes to the storefront or fenestration would be needed, but, I mean, the footprints in the parking layouts as tentatively proposed shouldn't have to change, but as currently proposed, staff does not support approval, and as such, staff recommends denial of this request of special exception. Should the commission find that the commercial elements of the adjacent property satisfy the requirements of the code, and that the ground floor residential is warranted at this location, staff recommends the following conditions, that approvals for the plan is submitted, as necessary did. Tactical revisions per the Site Plan Review Committee, and that if building permits are not issued... not issued within 18 months, a special exception shall require.
Thank you, Robert. Question for you and probably Ben, too. So there have been other cases where we had a mixed-use development, right, where the uses were separated in different buildings. This one's stretching that a bit further in that the existing... There's an existing commercial use that's being lumped as part of the development. I guess currently, the proposal is to count that existing commercial piece of property or the business that's there as part of the development. That's the stretch in my mind. But if it were being redeveloped with this, it would be more in keeping with what we've approved in the past. Is that correct?
Potentially.
Potentially. I guess part of my question is, let's say it was being redeveloped, that the service station was raised right now, and it was a blank slate. Would it need to be lumped in as a single subdivision? What, I mean, what might be the bar before we consider that one development? Does that make sense? Do we know?
No, not really. I mean, you... I don't know that we've had many asks before the commission similar to this of... You're right, we've had multiple buildings on a development site that have been, you know, considered, and we say, okay, well, you know, the building that's in the back is all residential because the building up at the front might be mixed-use with ground floor commercial. We don't know that we've ever had a proposal similar to this where an existing, you know, an existing site, I don't know that the business is even operational at the current moment. It may be, it may not be. I don't think that we've had anything like that. So what's the threshold? I think you're setting a threshold.
Right. At least one threshold.
It comes to the same setting threshold. At least while I've been here, I don't know that we've had a situation where someone's gotten approved for a project, done all the dirt work, and then come back and said, no, no, you know what, there's not that need for that anymore, so...
Well, certainly not in the context of, you know, I think we've had projects that have been approved, they started going through the process of development, and then maybe the development didn't move forward. So, but, you know, while it's still in the process of construction, while you still have a valid site plan, believe me, we've had multiple conversations inside the city about this, and we feel comfortable that if the commission felt comfortable in approving this, that, you know, a new site plan would be the triggering mechanism for voiding out the previous approvals. So that way, we don't have two sets of plans that we're having to deal with, because there could be, you know, different utilities that are required in different ways, in different places, and we don't want to certainly introduce confusion, you know, from that standpoint.
Well, and I don't, I just don't want to set a precedent. I mean, we had this, we had this issue, I guess, in historic preservation, where somebody came and said, hey, here's what I'm going to build. They approve it, approve the demolition, and then they said, oh, nope, decided not to, you know, put the lot on market. I don't want us to set a precedent that you can come before the city, submit some plans, and, you know, then just turn around and... I don't think you ought to require somebody to build something I want to build, but you also, the neighbors around it ought to be able to rely on the fact that, you know, somebody's making plans, and either they came and objected, or they didn't, you know, object.
Well, I think it's a fair point. I think, you know, the neighbors, you know, certainly have a right to know what's going to be constructed, which is why we ultimately got to in our discussion of the site plan, because they can't move forward with construction of anything, even if you're at the special exception. They can't move forward with the construction of what you would approve as part of the request that's before you tonight, but they could move forward with the construction of the site plan that they have approved already and presumably the special exception that was previously granted. But these may be direct questions that you want to ask of the applicant and see where they're at. I mean, who knows? Maybe they want to rescind their previous approval or avoid out that previous approval to move forward with this.
Yeah, I'll say, I don't, not speaking for anyone else, I don't have a problem with the switch in use or the building that's presented here. For me personally, it's a stretch to include the neighboring property, but, you know, if the commercial was incorporated into this building or if it was a request outright for the ground floor, that would be a different consideration. So, yeah. Any other questions? Anyone from the audience? Yes, Mr. Moore, come forward.
Good evening. So I'll say, I'll just put it out there and go over why we're asking for this and where we're at in the project, because the dirt work has been done and all that. So, you know, this project was very similar to the building that was just opened on South Ammar, that storage building. So moved forward, we got the site plan approved, started doing the dirt work, and then pricing came back for the building, and it went up 35%. So, and then we saw the projects across the street, like Savannah Square, get this option to where they've got one building that has all residential on the first floor that goes down Pleasant, and then the building on North Ammar has 51% commercial and then residential on the first floor. And Mr. Callicut was like, I own both of these. I'm fixing to redevelop this gas station site. And we sent some preliminary plans to the city that had like a coffee shop going in there that's kind of gotten grayish, whether that's to move forward, but he's got another set of people that's looking at developing more of a retail place on that. And he's, he owns both sites. Now, they are two different entity names, and that's just, just the way it is. But he does own both. The way I see it being shared is that we're creating one access point for both sites. So to me, that's, oh, that's one site, but not to deter from what we already had approved. But basically, he's looking at this option to see if he wants to, can we do this? Is it worth paying a bunch of people to move forward with pricing this option? Pricing this building, pricing the commercial, and if we can't get the special exception to ground floor residential over here, then there's no point in doing that, and we'll move forward with the storage building. But that's, we're just trying to weigh our options, where it's not trying to, you know, sneak anything around or anything like that. That's where we're at. That's what we're trying to figure out right now.
I mean, my sense is that it's, in principle, I don't think it's out of keeping with anything we've done before, but it's maybe a little bit too soon on this one, in the sense that, I mean, to Commissioner Milam's point, it's one thing to plan a storage building, decide you don't want to do that site plan, and start over with a different site plan. It's another thing to get approval for a mixed-use concept and then change direction on one side or the other if you've already started. For example, if you already built the residential and you say, you know what, I'm not really interested in tearing down this other piece of property.
Sure.
You know what I mean? So if, if there was one development in concept, including, you know, the site plan for the commercial part and the commitment to do the whole thing as one development, I think that's a different plan.
I think that's what we kind of presented with the coffee plan, but it's not in the package.
Yeah.
That's what, we redid it based on some conversations we had, submitted it to you guys on January 25th, and was like, here's the updated plan, shows the coffee shop renderings, and it wasn't in here, so I didn't know if that was taken out for a reason or we missed it.
I'll just say that what I have is what looks like a...
Sure.
Almost a site plan for one property and a property line.
Well, we submitted, we submitted revised set, and it had both properties as one development.
Yeah.
I'm like JR, I'd be more apt to do it if I knew what it's going to be if you were just saying, oh, this is a commercial, and we're just going to keep these gas pumps in the car wash there.
That's what we were talking, yes. That was the same argument we got back from the city. So we submitted one plan, and what I downloaded today was not that.
Yeah. But Ben, correct me, if they had the commercial on the ground floor of the building that we see in these plans, it would be by right? Everything? Okay. All right. Any other questions? Anyone from the audience wish to speak on this? Joey, anything else?
No.
Okay. All right. If there's no further discussion, is there a motion for the special exception for case number 3057?
I would kind of, I'd make a motion to table it right now and see what, see what other, you know, plans, you know, Joey had, because...
All right. Is, do you object to me giving the applicant the choice?
No.
Okay. Would you prefer tabling it or a decision right here?
Can I, can I ask what the feeling would be if we had a site plan that had both sites on there? Obviously, the fear is, let's table, let's bring it back, and then we still get denied, and we wasted, you know, another month doing that. That's going to...
Yeah, I can't, I can't predict the vote right now.
Sure.
You might be able to, and I can't predict the vote given different details.
Sure.
Yeah, it's up to you. I mean, should I consider the current motion, or would you like to withdraw?
I would say we'll table it, and...
Okay. There's a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of tabling? All right.
All right, thank you.
All right. That brings us to case number 3058, which is the final case for this evening. SMJ Enterprises has filed a request for two elements. One, a variance from section 5.7.7.2. A buffers, and B, a special exception is provided in section 3.5.1.2. C dwellings detached, districts permitted for property located at Harland Drive.
All right. Subject property is about 12.3 acres, located between Harland Drive and Oxford Farms, kind of specifically the landing development. The applicant is proposing a residential development of 30 detached and 31 detached units to be named Belavita, the site plan for which is currently under review by staff. The following requests are to facilitate this plan. The first one is the variance from the buffer section. The applicant is requesting a variance to encroach on the 50-foot buffer for the Blue Line stream, which is Bailey Branch, to the east of the site. Applicant is proposing a private drive to connect from Harland on the north that would encroach roughly 31 feet into the buffer at its maximum depth. The property will take its primary access from Oxford Way by way of an easement through Oxford Farms near the landing, and the applicant is proposing an additional one-way connection to Harland to allow for a second entrance. To be clear, this would be a one-way that would come from Harland into the new development. The applicant states that there is no way to construct a drive to Harland without encroaching into the buffer. While this project does not acquire two points of ingress and egress, the applicant feels providing the secondary access will be good for the project. Also, the existing homes in the subdivision that are accessed from Harland only have Harland as a way to get in and out of the subdivision onto South Ammar, and Harland Drive has periodically flooded at the existing box culvert between this proposed drive and South Ammar, granting the variance to allow construction of this new drive will provide an alternate means of access for the existing subdivision in the event the road is flooded or some other expected emergency blocked Harland. Staff agrees that this would be a beneficial secondary egress for the residents of Harland. The property in question is quite narrow at its frontage with Harland, and narrow, narrow is even more due to a, you know, westerly meander of the creek. The applicant has reduced the variance request as much as possible by locating the drive as far as possible from the creek, but at the narrowest point of the parcel, the creek meanders to the west within seven feet of the western property line, so there's just no possible way to fit a drive on there without being inside that buffer. Additionally, this portion of Bailey Branch has been channelized, but this bank stabilized with riprap and is no longer in its natural state. This requirement of the LDC was put in place to protect the natural drainage ways, not necessarily for those drainage ways that have been urbanized. Therefore, staff does not object to granting the applicant relief from this requirement of the land development code, though additional under canopy plantings would help to provide a screen for the development. As such, staff recommends approval of the requested variance with the condition that approvals for the plan is submitted, subject to necessary technical revisions, and an updated landscaping plan shall be provided as part of the site plan that indicates under canopy plantings along the access drive. For the special exception, the properties located in neighborhood residential and in those districts, detached units of more than four bedrooms are special exceptions, and the applicant is proposing that seven of the 31 detached units will be four-bedroom. The style of development is consistent with the developments to the south in Oxford Farms, where this development will take its primary access. Additionally, as these units have garages, parking for these four-bedroom units is covered, and as such, staff recommends approval of the requested special exception with the two conditions in the staff court.
Thank you, Robert. Just a couple of questions from me real quick. First is that you just stated this, but I just want to say it again. Since on the agenda it says property located at Harland Drive, the intended primary access is Oxford Farms.
Correct. Correct. It does have, again, access, well, if it runs on Harland Drive, and that's where the, I guess, address would be, but yes, the access would come from the south.
Okay. And then, just because we've seen a range of cases tonight, so this is a variance and a special exception that's preliminary to a plat and a site plan. Is that correct?
I don't know about a plat, but definitely a site plan.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Other questions?
You mentioned one way in off of Harland.
Correct.
Is that gated?
Do not believe we have any plans for that, man.
Mr. Chauvin, if you please come forward a minute. I'm Stuart Bival. I'm the project architect. I'm here with Scott and Tony, ownership team. Paul Cushonino was going to be with us, but he last minute said he was ill, even too ill to join us remotely. So when we get into stormwater, I'll do the best I can and may kick some to city engineering as well. The question of the access from Harland Drive, it is not gated. That's not the intention, is to gate it. We did commit to one way in, and I think that was, we were sort of asked to do that from engineering and planning staff to try and stop traffic onto Harland Drive, but still give two points of access into the development and give a relief for Harland Drive in the event of the flooding. But the intention is that it's not gated, it's not emergency access only.
Can I ask, I mean, I like having multiple points of ingress at least, or potentially emergency egress if it came to that, but this one is complicated. Was that the desire of the developer, or was that a request of the city, or how did that come about?
Both.
Okay.
So right now, the access from Oxford Farms, there's nothing there. It's creeks, it's going to require bridges to get in. So it's both. I mean, I think that planning department wanted two points of access, fire department always wants two points of access, and development wanted it.
I mean, I'm going to have plenty to say about water, so go ahead.
Please. Well, in one letter that we got, it was mentioning that upstream was double-covered culvert. When you got to Harland Drive, it was single choke point right there. Has there been any discussion of expanding that or widening that, that culvert, making that box culvert bigger?
Go ahead.
I can speak to that. The city does have an application in fee to take a grant to expand that box culvert to make it large enough to accommodate your storm. So that is in the works. Not immediate, but it works.
I mean, that said, the road overtops before the culvert does, so it's not, the low point is not at the culvert, it's not backing up at the culvert first. There seems to be a low point upstream between Belk and Harland where it leaves the channel and then comes across Harland Drive and then goes back into the channel. So I think that's my biggest concern, is that it's not just that one choke point that's at issue, and the construction of the road may or may not impact things upstream. It's hard to tell. Any thoughts?
I don't even pretend to be a civil engineer, so, I mean, you know, that, but I guess the principle that we all know is that, is that our site is designed to move water no faster than it is done today. And I believe that Paul would say, I'm channeling Paul here through John, I believe that Paul would say that's done on this site, and so from an engineering standpoint, I think that it should not be exacerbating any conditions currently.
Yeah, I guess, John, if you know, when they did their stormwater calculations, did any of those take into account what would be flowing onto the property, you know, west of, yeah, west of the road that they're putting in, bypassing the culvert?
Straight flooded.
Yeah, yeah.
Strictly from what was on their side.
And is there a design for the road? Is it going to be at grade, or is it going to be raised? Do you either, you know?
For the access road?
Into ours? Yeah. You don't know?
Yeah, I mean...
There is a little, they want to bring in a little field just, just to bring it up, but, but the design and construction of that route on, on the south shouldn't affect whether or not, it shouldn't have any, it shouldn't exacerbate like, like Stuart says, the existing flooding that takes place on Harland now. Really, the only way to fix that is, is to go in and rebuild that box culvert in that road to make sure all that water can get through that box culvert. You're right that the low spot is not where the box is. And so that's one of the things we're looking to address with that project.
Alright, thank you.
The, the low spot is, is west or east of the culvert?
It's west.
West.
West of the culvert. Okay.
Stuart, I have a question. Just comparing the site plan that we were given versus, you know, that shows a very small ceiling, I'll have you note. The dimensions that exit on the Harland Drive versus what's showing that your clients own the road frontage on Harland Drive, it looks like when I just measured it, TSC maps it about 370. The frontage and why, why, if you need that road, why don't you make that road exit further west of the, of the creek?
So I, I believe, and owner and planning staff can talk about this, that's a, I believe that that's not in the zoning? Is that correct? That the, that's, it's a different piece of property, the single-family lot, to the west of where this piece of property hits onto Harland. And so to use that, I believe we'd be getting into subdivision modification, rezoning, lots of things to be able to put that into this development that are probably across the board a no-go. I, I mean, I...
I'm just, I was just comparing.
Right.
Didn't make much sense.
Yeah, so that's why, because this, that little piece that comes up, that's the piece of this property.
The design for...
Correct, yeah, yeah. That's right.
Additional questions? Anyone from the audience who'd like to speak? Yes, sir. Please come forward.
Hey, JR?
Yes.
We just want to note the letters that we have received. We've included as combined attachments of public comment. That's everything we've received at this point.
Thank you, Ben. Yeah, commissioner is attached to your agenda. There is a, a file with all the letters we received. Yes, sir. Please state your name.
Martin McAnally, 1014 Harland Drive. So I, on the property is directly across from where the variance is being requested. We've covered some of what, what my concerns are. I submitted my letter and some pictures to you guys to try to get that to you ahead of time so we could have some clarity to that. One point I'd like to make, you know, we, we're talking about making this a one-way entrance and exit and I, I personally feel that when you're coming north from town, if you make that a one-way entrance, that's gonna be a one-way entrance for everybody that's going to my neighborhood and to this proposed development. And they're just automatically turn off in there. Whether they're going up the hill or into here will increase the amount of traffic in front of my house dramatically. My other point about that, the, the particular, the variance is if this was approved and in the development stages, I stated in my, my letter, I've been here many times over the years because of the small box culvert that we have on Harland Drive. And so we've, we've been, it, it floods on a regular basis. There's been, as I said, several hundred-year floods. It's happened, you know, and, and so on my, my pictures that I submitted, Belk Extended has three, I'm not an engineer, that type of engineer, has three box openings. That's to the north of me. Harland Drive has a single, pretty, pretty bad culvert. Then south of me on where it goes into South Lamar and under has a two-opening. So it's obvious to me that Harland Drive, regardless of what happens here, is a bottleneck causing the flood. And whether we move forward with this or not in the development stages is a real concern for me of what happens in, in causing and flooding my property. And so I am currently opposed to that. And Harland Drive, the, the flooding is a big issue. If you go back and look at past history of meetings such as this, we've stopped developments such as the Hamlet because they were flooding our property and the developer built a retaining wall. Now, that doesn't stop all the flooding because it goes up in the street and can circle around it in my driveway. So that's, that's kind of my stance and you've seen the pictures that I've submitted of where we're at on the, the flooding portion. So, you know, the special exception, South Lamar is already a crowded street where you can hardly get out on it. It's, it's not equipped to handle the amount of traffic that we have on it and putting on it. So I'm opposed to just adding more bedrooms with more people. That adds more cars to the already problem that we have. And until we resolve some of these issues, I'm, I'm just asking that we deny this.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. If that FEMA project came through and that culvert, single cover culvert was expanded and took away some of that problem, would that change the way you feel?
It helped my feelings some, yes, but it'd have to come first. You know, we can't get the cart before the horse because without that, that doesn't resolve my problem. The reason I say I would consider that is a red light is appealing because it is hard to get on, on South Lamar and turn left anywhere. In Oxford, turn left is horrible. And so, you know, so a red light, although I'd have to weave through, I might could get out. You know, right now I'm just taking my chances. It depends on what time of day it is to get out on South Lamar now. But yes, the, my primary concern is, is the flooding. And it's, it's a huge issue down there. If you hadn't lived through it, it's pretty scary. It's violent. If you go down there and you look at the, the large rocks that are down there that just waters moving, it can be pretty scary.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir, please. Come forward.
Hello, everyone. My name is Zach Contractor. I live next to this development that's happening on 1011 Harland Drive. My property is just adjoining to the land that the, the proposed development is going on. I'm concerned about the southeast corner of my land where it's way down the hill. It's already in the flood zoning, the whole development that's going on. And whenever it rains heavy, I mean, I see water just stranded over there for days and days. It doesn't go anywhere. To my knowledge, I think they gotta raise it up, this land to about three feet of filled dirt to raise that up. Now, that's gonna create more, I'm gonna get locked in at the corner of it, at the southeast corner of it, of my property. So how are they gonna address that? That's my biggest concern about the water that's gonna be stranded right there at that corner. It will be locked in.
Thank you, sir.
Also, the culvert, I mean, that's already been addressed. I mean, it's narrow and it's getting weak. Back in 2016, it got washed out. And the city was very proactively, they developed it very ready again for accessible. So it was accessible within a day or two, which was great. But that culvert is getting weak.
I'd like to elaborate on that, too.
Yeah, if you could just, just wait until he's finished and then you can go forward, please.
About the traffic situation, I know this entrance will be only for Harland Drive for emergency purpose only. That's what been dedicated towards, to build that access on Harland Drive?
Well, just to, just to clarify, it would only be bidirectional in emergency cases. I think the intention is for it to be open for entrance only to anyone during normal operation. Correct? Yeah.
Okay. Well, on the application for variance, I mean, when you do the variance as far as my knowledge goes, variance is like you creating more variety of development. I'm a pro-developer. I don't block anything here. But at the same time, getting, giving variances away is like you're creating more inconsistency in the development process around, and in Oxford. Also, in the application, on the front page, the, on the paragraph, it says, while the project does not require two-point of ingress and egress, the applicant feels providing this secondary access will benefit the project. So if it's not required, it's clear it says while this project does not require two points of access, then why even ask for if it doesn't require? And the main entrance will be on Oxford Way. That's where all this development is going anyways, where the student housing is and all that. Also, another point of concern is like, I mean, this development, is it going to be more of a, like a rental? And is it going to be like a long-term rentals or a short-term rentals? I mean, we need to take a look at all this Airbnb popping up. I mean, long-term rentals, then I have a neighbor for, maybe they live in there for three years, four years. Mostly this will be students, so I'm expecting like the rentals will be done for like at least four years. But when you do try and do Airbnb, I mean, I'll see different type of people coming into town. Every single day there'll be somebody different, like a hotel. So that would be my concern as well. And if somebody can address that and tell me about it, what type of development this is gonna be, like build it, sell it, and then do what? Like long-term rentals or short-term rentals? And city need to look into that and address that, too. I mean, there's a lot of Airbnb popping up everywhere around town. I mean, I've seen in big cities where they are kind of putting control restrictions on not to have more of Airbnbs, you know, so that'll be one of my concerns, too. My biggest concern is that corner, the southeast corner of my property, is gonna get blocked in and the water will have no access to go to.
Thank you, sir.
That's my biggest concern. Thank you.
So to, to, to address a couple of your, your points, on the Airbnbs, I mean, the city has looked at whether and how to, to regulate Airbnbs in the past and it's not a simple question.
Sure.
In terms of the planning commission, we don't really have anything in the code that allows us to differentiate between renters and buyers. So what we're looking at in this case is just whether to grant the variance for that ingress point and then the special, special exception for four bedrooms or not. Whether they are renting the four bedrooms or buying the four bedrooms, we can't really make any determination on at this point. I mean, the, the developer's welcome to say what their intentions are, but they're not bound to whatever they, they say tonight, I don't think. So then why put an ingress point here if it's not required? I think that's a great question. I think it's a, it's a trade-off in the sense that it, it benefits the development in having two points of access in case of some emergency in one point gets, gets blocked. It benefits folks on Harland Drive, maybe not in the balance, but it benefits the folks on Harland Drive for having access to a, a light to get out. So there, there are upsides to it, but I think the, the hard part is that there are clearly potential downsides to it as well and that's what we're trying to separate tonight.
Sure.
And in the southeast corner of your property, John, in discussions with Steve, he mentioned that there might be some storm drains somewhere around his, his property line. Do you know if that's true or not?
Well, I know of the ditch that, that runs generally southeast towards Bailey Branch, but I would need to get with Steve on that.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, your concern about flow getting trapped on your property, I mean, it's one of the primary concerns associated with the, the ingress point, so it's noted. I appreciate that.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Did you want to come forward? Stuart, do you want to? Yeah, go ahead and respond and, go ahead and respond and then we'll, yeah. Sorry, sir. If you could just let him say a couple of things. Thank you.
We will respond to rental versus for-sale. It's, it's all for-sale product, not, it's not a rental development. One thing to point out, so the two points of, of access, the second point of access for this development is, is really the one to the south. Initially, this property was going to use its connection to Harland Drive because that is the frontage that this property has and historically always has had. Recognizing that they're atta, that they are connecting and now, I will say they're connecting into Harland Drive before we get to the single-family residential. It's not like, you know, we're not bringing them deeply, deep into the neighborhood. But recognizing that we are, they are connecting to a single-family residential road, they approached the developer to the south to look at purchasing property to try and make that second connection. So that's really, though, though they want to turn this into the primary connection, if it makes sense what I'm saying, they, it really, that was an attempt to create a second connection to try and relieve some pressure off of Harland Drive.
Chronologically, Harland was the primary connection.
It was the only connection that this property had to any public street.
And is the second connection secured at this point? Is the Oxford Way connection secured?
It would be having an easement, which is only from the south.
Okay.
But the only public access to that land is today on Harland Drive.
Okay, but the second access, you have the easement. It would be constructed with the development?
Yes, yeah. I think that's important to point out that that, on their own, they went and tried to create this second connection recognizing this situation. Then the, the, the stormwater, I, I really, you know, I, I was gonna talk about it, but I really should not. But I do, I do know that, that there was that, that, that pipe coming out from that property was identified and captured and rerouted. I mean, I had to move clubhouse and pool and everything for that. So I, I wish Paul was here. I think he could speak to that being addressed. And obviously, I mean, precision engineering, they knows, they know, we're not, we can't trap water on someone else's property. So pretty confident in saying I think that they're aware of that and would have addressed it, so. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir, if you'd like. Yes, if you'd state your name.
I'm Stephen Butler, just up the hill on Harland Drive. And, sir, in all these speeches, what we might call it, it will prove safety leaving Harland Drive by allowing secondary power without crossing that track. Given how, I think we're quite weak in service, right? Because of the track is in Georgia and now that box culvert is volatile and isn't very, very proper. The two areas are just okay, but from my point of view, it's an accident. It's my accident.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for your effort to be here tonight. Yes, sir, if you would like to come forward.
I'm Mike Portera. I live at 1002 Woodland Lane. That's just off Harland Drive up the hill. A lot like Mike said, I, I don't know if you, I just want to kind of elaborate on it a little bit. Unless you come down and watch it rain and then you watch it come up and go over the road without anything right now going on. I've had to park the car at the hospital behind my house just in case I couldn't get out sometimes. That, that's always been the biggest concern. When I say that culvert's been compromised, I'm not trying, like Mark, I'm not trying to hold anything back. That, that culvert's been compromised. I've run up and down that road. You can ask the city. You can look at some of their, where they had to come and fix it. In back, backfill with some blacktop and it would wash out and they'd do it... do it over and over again, they diverted the water, which water always wins, we know, it's just, it's scary thought, knowing that I may not get down that road one day, and that's even before the development. Like I said, if it was a bigger one, I may be more apt to do it. And the second, the second one is, I know me personally, I'm not willing to bet anyone in this room is gonna take the quickest way out of any neighborhood to get onto a road, and I would do that in a heartbeat, and I just wanna know, how can we actually judge this only gonna go one way? The control over that? Because I know if I came out of my neighborhood, or out of my driveway, I look to the left, and there's, you know, 50 cars there, and look over here, and there's 20 cars here, and there's a lot of cars. We're in a small neighborhood now, and it's hard to get out on our, on, on Harlan, I mean, it is hard.
Right.
I kid you not, I text AJ, I said, it's kinda hard getting out of our neighborhood now, and he was laughing about it, yeah, it is, kinda hard. And this, if you do that, it was hard for me to sign students here, I was late getting to this meeting. So, those are the two things, the water, and then the, how you can access it just one way.
Yes.
So, Mike, do you think having that access would help you to get to the light?
Having that access-
To, to get out of the neighborhood?
Having a light there?
No. To, to take that access road and cut through and go down to the light on, uh-
No, no, no.
Oxford Farm.
Oh, I could always go and take a right and do that. I mean, I can always jump out.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but I'm having to take a left.
No, but I'm saying, if they put the access road in, would it not benefit you, which is one of the things I think it's saying, is that you could then take that access road down to Farm Way, whatever the name of that road is, hit the light and come back up?
Well, I could actually kinda do that now, just hit on Harlan, I mean, I'd come on Harlan, take a right, I'd take a right for the use of it, it's coming out left.
I know, but getting out onto South Lamar from Harlan-
I, I just take, like I'm saying, I just take a right and go to, to the-
Right.
FNC and go up seven, I do that all the time. Right now, it, it could, would it help me? I don't, I can't answer that question, I really don't. I, I mean, I'm sure, is it gives me another access, but you're putting more, more cars out on that, on the road, it'd be, I, you have to, I don't know, that'd be numbers. Right now, I don't know if that's any quicker, it, to be honest with you, go, 'cause I look down the road at five o'clock, and it's, you know, it's way down there, it's about, you know, dentist office.
Oh, if you're going southbound, then it might help, that access road, but if you're going north, then this reduces the fact of, you're going to the south, and you can turn and go back.
It just gives you access to a light, but like you said, you could always turn right on-
I, I do that all the time, I can't sit there and wait, that, you know, it's just crazy, so.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Not, not for you, I guess, developer, architect, whoever, would y'all consider just having one point of entry-exit? And not having-
Well, I mean, this is also a question for Ben, because if we took away this, they wouldn't have frontage to a street. How would that impact the development, from the code standpoint?
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's certainly a, a key point here, is that this is their frontage, and it would be something that we, we haven't necessarily evaluated, if there wasn't an access to Harlan, we'd probably have to have a variety of discussion with other departments, fire department in particular, we need to have that conversation and see, see their thoughts. I know that they have been pretty, they have been pretty adamant about having a second point, second point of ingress, progress, so. I mean, fire department? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I, to answer it directly, I think, no, I mean, the, the two points of access, and again, this is really, though we've turned it into a one-way in, it really, it really is, this is the street frontage for the property, they've gone and tried to create the second, so, no, I think that the feeling is that, that the two are needed. And, and I would, I would suggest that, previous comment, that people are gonna take the quickest way out from this development. I think, I don't think anybody's gonna consider going against the one-way to Harlan Drive, and then waiting forever to take a left on Lamar, being the fastest way out. I think everyone from this development is gonna consider Oxford Way with a traffic signal the fastest way out, and I think even, probably a lot of residents from Harlan Drive would consider that light as well, to turn left on Lamar as a, as a faster option.
I agree with what you're saying, and it's a good, I mean-
Sir, if, if you-
I agree with what you're saying, I'd like to give a motion like that.
Please.
Can you go back to the microphone?
Yes, sir, please come forward.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to belabor the point here, and I guess, although it would be good if you, you have a, a light, but I still gotta turn left to get to the light. So, with all the condos and stuff that are there, it, you know, when I get down this new access road, I've still gotta go left to be able to use this light that supposedly is gonna help me. But at the end of the day, whether we have this access road or not, and we develop this, this property, if we don't address the flooding issue, you know, it's, it's still gonna cause a problem there, I'm, I'm no expert, but during the development stages, contractors aren't the best at keeping things cleaned up and things from flooding, it may help me at the end of the day, once the development is complete, but it's that in-between stage that, that concerns me probably the most, and then there's still the fact that I gotta turn left to try to get out, even to the light.
Thanks, sir.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Going on an access road doesn't solve the problem of turning left. If I'm going access road, and I hit Oxford Way, I still take left turn to get on Oxford Way. Of course, the signal light helps me take a left turn on South Lamar, but to go, make a left on an Oxford Way from this access road, it's gonna be hard, it's gonna be the same way what we are facing right now.
Understood. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, we have before us two requests, a variance for the buffer, that would just be to allow the, the primary entrance, which is off Harlan, to go into the buffer next to Blue Line Stream, and a special exception for the four-bedroom component of the development. Is there a motion on the variance?
I'd make a motion to approve the variance, of both variances, with those staff conditions.
There, we'll do just the variance for the buffer first. There's, there's a motion on the, to approve the variance subject to staff conditions, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor of approving the variance? Any opposed? One opposed? All right, the variance is granted, is there a motion on the special exception? All right, hearing no motion on the special exception, I'll make a, a motion to deny the special exception, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of denying? All right, special exception is denied. Is there any other business to come before the, the commission, Ben?
Nothing else.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor?
Yeah.
Motion, second?